Our council meeting to order first order of business will be the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We'd like to welcome to our February twenty first, two thousand twenty-three meeting, second meeting of the year. First order of business would be the consent agenda, which includes our January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three regular council meeting minutes, February ninth, two thousand twenty-three council workshop minutes, request to approve Anne Swanson as a member of the library board of trustees, and a request to approve bingo permit to Pine Island area home services on April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three at Pine Island American Legion.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. I'd like to welcome Anne Swanson to the board. 印证下 vote. I'm favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll show a big sign. It's always nice to have people step up and volunteer on our committees, so be a good fit. There you go. All right, we'll move into public input. We have any written correspondence?
No written correspondence.
No written correspondence. Two minutes is a typical timeframe for speakers. First will be Nancy Bergeron with the image committee updating us on Winterfest. Absolutely welcome.
I need you by a microphone.
How can you turn it down, right? Okay.
Unfortunately, you almost need to eat the microphone for it to hook up.
All right. Well, thank you for having me tonight on behalf of the image committee. I don't know if everybody knows how the image committee got started. So if you want me to just give you a quick brief rundown on how that all came together, I can do that very quickly. So back to two thousand eight, the city, I believe, was granted funds from the Minnesota, or no, from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. And out of that, they had a town meeting. They came up with three topics that they were going to pursue. It dealt with education and having a STEM program at the high school. The next one dealt with envi- environmental, so they pursued rain barrels and compost area. And then finally, the last one was ecotourism. And that was basically promoting the Douglas Trail and the community of Pine Island itself. And so the three groups met their goals, but there was like a dozen folks that still wanted to continue with more of the ecotourism piece. So they, along with the EDA office, and I believe it was the city as well, pursued a number of initiatives. One being the Big Sign Out on Fifty-two was part of that group. Another one was Borrow a Bike that was led primarily by Jerry Vettel and Roy Larson. The signs, the welcome signs that you see coming into town, County eleven, across from the treatment plant, out on County three, there's like six or seven of them. And then finally, the image committee started Winterfest, which was eleven. We had our eleventh Winterfest this year on January twenty-eighth. We will be having our ninth gala this year, which is the Cheese, Wine and Beer Gala. So that's kind of in a nutshell how everything came together with the image committee. But as I mentioned, we celebrated or had the eleventh Winterfest on January twenty-eighth, and image committee primarily coordinates the events for that day. So a number of events started out with, obviously, the ice rink is certainly a big part of Winterfest. And we had Angie Severson host Winter Exploration. And then Skate with a Cop, we've done that for three, four years now, I think. And of course, the Cardboard Sliveries, the senior citizens get involved with their games and treats. And we have cross-country trails and snowshoe trails on the golf course, which the Byron Snow Bears groomed those for us, so we're always very happy to have them provide that as well. And then Ted hosted a concert. And we have a Soup and Chili Feed out at the golf course along with Bonfire. Library book giveaway. I think that's kind of all of the events. I hope I didn't miss anything. But nonetheless, I think the big thing that really came out of Winterfest this year was the promotion that took place with the Midwest Access Show on January twenty-sixth, that KTTC was in town filming a number of different events. They're about to be on as well with a new K through four school. But they hosted it from the History Center at four o'clock that afternoon. But KTTC, KIMT, the Post Bulletin, the News Record all published something about Winterfest. So it's not just about Winterfest. It's really about promoting the community. And I did tell KTTCTV that they're welcome back anytime they want to come to continue promoting the community. So that's it in a nutshell for Winterfest two thousand twenty-three.
Any function to gauge attendance, people, activity?
I think most of, I don't know, Ted, how did your event go? Yeah, so I, I, I think, you know, the Cardboard Sliveries is always popular with locals. Bingo, they packed the house, that much I do know. I haven't really heard about the Senior Citizen Center, but I think they did okay.
They'll keep them busy, she said.
Yeah, it looked busy. And the Soup and Chili Feed went well, and you got rid of all your books. Yeah, so it, it was cold, but we actually had the trails out at the course groomed a couple of days earlier because we knew it was going to be so cold. So we promoted the use of those by Thursday at noon roughly already for that very reason. So and there were people out there, and there were a lot of folks that, you know, they can come out and rent skis and snowshoes for five bucks to give it a try. And a lot of families do that, so. And Eagle Bluff Environmental Center actually comes with their skis and snowshoes to do that, so.
I was gonna say with Mrs. Bergeron and that committee's work, they're one of those hidden secrets in the community, and they do a lot to promote our community and Winterfest is a testament to that and bringing quite a few people from out of town. And so it's lots to be here, much appreciated.
And I forgot one thing. So the image committee does also try to pour back money into the community. So with that being said, we, we added those heaters in the cheese factory, and we partnered with the park board on the new tables and chairs that were put in there a few years ago. So we found a, found a good deal. Somebody was getting out of that business. Snatched those babies right up. But we've got a few other things in mind that we want to do this year too, so. Yeah, we, our intent is always to give back as well.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Colati, welcome.
I'll try to keep it to two minutes, but I don't think that's going to be possible. I know that you guys are going to be discussing and possibly voting on ordinance one sixty-four, the tetrahydrocannabinol products. And do you have that up on, or can you get it up or on the screen or not?
We will when we discuss it later.
All right, all right. Well, I'm just gonna go through, okay, so just so you all hear me out. I do think that an ordinance is possibly needed. So I'm not standing here before you saying that I don't agree in ordinance. I have questions about the ordinance because I don't think it's clear. And that's the concern I have. And I know you're maybe not as educated or as informed as I am. I'm a cannabis educator, and obviously, this is my livelihood, and this is what I do. So that being point, why I'm here is I'm kind of, I kind of went through it. And I have a few concerns, like it says under definitions, licensed product of, or THC product, any product that contains more than trace amount. Well, we sell even before this THC ordinance or this THC one-five-one-point-seven-two was amended last year to allow these five-milligram edibles and drinks, we were selling full-spectrum CBD. And full-spectrum CBD has point-three percent THC or below in it. So I guess I'm, I just need some clarification on that. Does it include all CBD products? There's a CBG product that doesn't have any THC in it. There's CBD isolate that doesn't have any THC in it. So I don't know if that's, if I can ask questions to you guys or if you guys can discuss that because that's a concern of mine. Because if I choose not to get the THC permit or license, can I still sell my full-spectrum CBD? Or can I sell that CBD broad-spectrum drink right there that doesn't have any THC in it? So that's a question that I have on, on the way that this ordinance is written right now. On, I know it talks about there's, the, the city can permit a license or they can just deny somebody a license. And it doesn't state why they can deny somebody a license. There's no clear indication of why. I hope it's not based on the color of their skin. I hope it's not based on ethnicity or creed. I know, but it doesn't say. It just says you can deny.
Follow federal guidelines on that.
Okay, okay. So the other thing too, it talks about that you cannot transfer a license. So it says you cannot transfer license, but then further down, it does say that you can transfer a license. So I don't know why it would say that you can't transfer license, yet it has ways of transferring a license. That's down for application for permit under C on subdivision four. It also talks about a financial check, and I understand a background check. But what is the purpose of having a financial check? Is it a, are you looking at my credit? Are you looking into my, all my financial dealings? I just, I need clarification on that. I don't understand why it would say that there's a financial check on the application. If a license is mistakenly issued or renewed to a person, it shall be revoked upon the discovery that the person was ineligible for license. I think that might need some clarification too, because it's like, it just, you can just yank a license from somebody. And I understand that this was somewhat drafted off of the tobacco license, so I don't know if there needs to be someone reviewing that tobacco license as well. It does again talk about transfer of license under subdivision four D number two. You have in here that there's no mobile businesses? Or you actually talk about mobile businesses under subdivision or subdivision four D number six? Yet in subdivision seven, you say there are no movable places or mobile units. So that's kind of contradicting as well.
Mayor. Yes. So sorry to interrupt. I mean, this is normally not a time for staff like me to ask people questions. Is that okay if I ask a question right now, or should I wait?
No, if you'd like to go ahead, Bob, that'd be fine.
Yeah, so I mean, clearly Ted is knowledgeable about this and probably has investigated this further than a lot of us have. So I, I guess the question is that, you know, the legislature proposes right now to expand the allowable, the legal kinds of THC and marijuana-based products that are legal in Minnesota. And right now, the, the bill proposes to preempt, to supersede local control over that, but that law hasn't passed yet. So in the interim between now and when that law may pass, and of course, it may change right between now and passage. But the, the ordinance that's been proposed was proposed before the bill, that's before the legislature was drafted. So, you know, I, I'm not sure what, you know, Ted, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your last name. I'd use your last name if I could. But I'm not sure, do you propose that the city allow this in the interim? Because, because going forward, the legislature is clearly going to change the rules that apply to marijuana-based products, to, to THC and marijuana-based products. We don't know how that change is going to happen because it hasn't happened yet, right? It's, they haven't voted on it yet. So what, what, what are you asking the city to do, I guess, now?
I'm not necessarily asking the city to not have an ordinance.
Yeah.
But I think we need to be careful on how we draft an ordinance because, like you said, I'm, I'm up there. I've testified probably ten times.
Right.
Friday, I was meeting with MNs ready, and I'm helping legislators write the bills. I'm talking to legislators. And I just feel like if you come in, it's one thing if you come in and say, okay, yes, low ordn- and, and I don't, I don't know if there's, you know, somewhere to define that, but low potency THC, what's available now? And I know it's, it refers to one-five-one-point-seven-two, but it is hemp-derived, low potency THC that we're talking about. So that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about, you know, it's not, we're not going recreational. I know it says we're, we're not talking about medical. We're talking about the low potency THC, and that's perfectly fine. But like I told Brandy today, one of the, and I know, so Elizabeth didn't want me to talk about the legislations coming forth, but then on one end, you got to kind of think about it because one of the things it does state is that if it goes through as a cannabis adult use bill, they won't allow high potency THC. Now, I don't know about the low potency THC, but they won't allow it within a thousand feet of a school or a playground, which caters to kids. So that's going to solve a lot of the, maybe the distance issues that we're talking about right now. But I guess that's, that's just my concern is, am I going to be able to continue to do my business? And so if it doesn't specifically state low potency THC, you know, five milligrams or the fifty milligrams per container hemp-derived. I mean, I know it says that in one-five-one-point-seven-two, but I want to be able to know, okay, if I choose not to get the license, because it doesn't say how much the license is, I know that you're coming for saying that it's not going to, you know, inhibit me from doing my job or having, you know, be able to sell it. But if it's, it is substantial, like a thousand dollars, I may say, well, I'm not willing to do this. And, but I still want to be able to sell my CBD because I was always selling CBD, full-spectrum CBD, and it doesn't get anyone high. It doesn't. I'm not here to debate, you know, one-five-one-point-seven-two or the stand. I don't really, I'm not a pro recreational guy, believe it or not. I'm actually out there fighting for the hemp growers, the people that are in this for the hemp and for the healing aspect of it. And I'm not out there trying to get people high. I don't want people to get high, and I don't want kids to get high. I want to keep it out of the hands of all kids. Actually, I'd like to see it below twenty-five because the prefrontal cortex is not fully developed in age, age twenty-five, but I can't do that. We don't regulate alcohol like that. So I'll, I'll, do you want to?
For, this is public input. We generally try to keep to that two minutes.
Yep.
Because we've, we've discussed this quite a few times. So do you have another, another question so we can get to the, to the next part here or?
Yeah, I was just gonna wrap up. So really, I want to know if it doesn't include all cannabinoids. Cannabinoids are, there's a hundred and forty of them, but that's the THC, the CBD, the CBG, the THCA, the CBDA, all those. Does it include all cannabinoids? Because I need to know that. And Quick Trip, I know they're selling CBD, so they need to know that as well. How much is the fee? And then I guess I would just ask that, you know, you look at this movable unit and the transfer of license, because if you don't want a movable unit or a mobile unit, you should clarify that and make sure that that's the case. The other thing too, and I don't know if this is my, that's why I wanted to see if it would come up, but this might have been me printing it off. Section six-point-four, right at the very beginning, it doesn't say tetrahydrocannabinol. It says, at least, and this might have been my printer not printing off the L, but it says tetrahydrocannabinol. It doesn't, doesn't say, is it my printer? Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Commissioner, would you like to add anything? Welcome. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. Right. Let's move on to administration here. We're going to go into item A, which is Kara Cordes requesting for signage. Requesting signage on public property. Welcome. Would you like to step up to the lecture and introduce yourself and?
Thanks for having me. I'm Kara Cordes. I'm here on behalf of Pine Island Schools as well as Lisa Myron Shetty Beck here, athletic director. We're just really excited about an opportunity to put some more signs in our town celebrating our success of our athletes. And we're looking to see how the city could assist with that and hoping that we may find a spot that we could put a state champion sign that looks very similar to this. I have enough copies. A few lies that I'll like one. I think Elizabeth might have it as well. But we're just looking for a, a location in the city and some collaboration with the city on possibly putting that up so we can celebrate our successes as champions.
So just to give some more backstory, Kara, Lisa, Wayne, our Parks and Street Supervisor and I, we met Friday down at Trailhead Park, just to kind of look to see if there'd be a good location. And we kind of looked at what utilities were in the grounds, things like, things like that. And we came up with a good location with what we call the Let's Go Park, which is that little kind of island right behind the grocery store. There isn't a whole lot there, and it would kind of be out of the way of plowing. We would have to talk to the county just because it would butt up to the county right away. But we think that would be a good spot just for visibility. If we look back more at Trailhead, there's a lot of signs. There's a lot of things going on. And so with the crosswalk right at Trailhead, we thought it would be good if it would be after that, just so we were pulling the visibility away. However, you'd still be able to see it from a distance. You'd also be able to see it from Main Street as well.
And it would be a two-sided sign, so you could see it as you're leaving town as well as coming into town.
So Let's Go Park were visible up near the road.
Correct, yeah. So it would be on the northern part of that, right off, right off County Road eleven. There's like fifteen feet of right away, so.
I think that's important that people see it coming into town.
Yeah, so again, this is just the first step in our process, obviously, with, if we get the, the go-ahead from the city and we want to keep collaborating with you, well, the next step will be for us to raise funds for it, and we'll see how long that takes.
What's the project for the sign, do you know? What's the?
Right now, it's, it's looking close to about six thousand dollars for the sign.
So would this be a school maintain, maintain?
Yes, that's exactly what we're hoping for is, yep, we would maintain it as well as we'd be in charge of adding all of the new champions to the, that would not be any cost to the city or anyone else. It would be covered by the school.
This is, this, I think JP, you brought this up.
Yeah, you reached out to me a couple of years ago on this already, and I kind of said you need to talk to these people and these people. Yeah, I think it was actually a combination of you and Coach Garthbro. I think it's a great idea. I think it's beautiful. My fuzzy math looks like we can get six signs on there roughly stacked top to bottom with dimensions you've given. Is that enough?
I think it's a great start. I think we also talked about, you know, as we continue to have champions, because that's what we're going to have. We can adjust those signs. So if we have like repeat champions, we can add additional dates behind their name. We, we can do different things. We might have to tweak that look of it eventually, but I think for right now, it's a great start, and we can kind of go from there. I know a lot of other small towns celebrate that, and so I was really hoping we could do the same for our athletes and in our community. They do. Yeah.
Yeah, it needs, we need, yeah, we need it.
I'll move approval of the signs for the, location of the signs.
What is that? So that, I mean, that's all you need right now?
Right now, I'm just looking for a location and approval. Yep.
What else do you need, so?
Yep, yep, that's what I'm looking for. Sure, if you have money, that would be great.
I'm waiting.
Although budget for twenty-three is done, so we need to work on twenty-four budget. We got.
They do have an image committee back there.
Well, I think.
Foundation.
I think there are plenty of people that would gladly donate something like this as well.
Yeah, and, and that's definitely something that Lisa Myron Shetty will definitely continue. This is, like I said, a kind of our first, first step in the, in the process, so.
I would prefer it doesn't turn into a NASCAR billboard, though, I mean.
It's not. It's going to be very simple. There's, we really don't want to put a lot of, just keeping it very branded about the school and the, and the sports. And so that's why if you look at this, and I, like I said, I have a copy for everybody if you'd like. It's real, real simple and clean.
I just gotta be the, I mean, we'd have some agreement about names and upkeeps with the town. Yeah, I mean.
We're gonna trim around it. We're gonna mow it.
Needs to be, yeah, I mean.
No, we don't want, we, and we, and from a school standpoint, we want it to look nice too. So we don't want it to.
For the guys, if we put like a flower bed or something around, so they would have to get as close to the machine either.
So we got a, yeah, we got a motion and a second here. So all in favor, council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate the support.
Yeah.
All right, council, let's move on to resolution twenty-three dash zero five approving support for the North Zumbro Sanitary District. Miss on the front burner.
We are. As you know, we've passed resolutions like this in the past, so we are in a new session for at the state legislature. So we are passing new resolutions in support of the sanitary district. As you know, as you remember, we appointed a lobbyist firm to help move this forward. We have been gaining traction on this, and so we do have support from both the Republicans and Democratic side. So we do have bipartisan support for this. The bills are supposed to be introduced this week, and so that is why on the resolution, the bill numbers are currently blank. And so if this were to pass, if you could include that, we, we would put in the bill numbers as they're introduced this week. But I would also like to thank Prairie Island. They've been helping us lobbying as well. They've been having a lot of meetings with our state representatives, and they've been putting a lot of time and effort into this as well.
Have they made any updates with, taught with legislation, looking at trying to take money, not using bonding dollars to try to project explore? Have you heard any updates?
So a total of four bills will be introduced to in the Senate and to the rep, on the rep side. And so one bill will be for a bonding bill, and then the other bill will be for excess budget dollars. So we are looking to try to capture funds from different sources.
I'll move resolution twenty-three zero five with giving you the ability to add the bill numbers as you have them.
Motion and a second. Like Ms. Howard said, there's a lot of parts playing in this, and it's.
So we got to keep working on it.
Yeah. That counts. Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Elizabeth. We are going to move on to resolution twenty-three dash zero six, which is approving business license for Harders Quick Cleanup.
So this would be a second or a third company on the Homestead side. Third, so this is for Homestead County only. As you know, they have to apply for each county because each county has different regulations, which makes it difficult for us. However, we have received an application from Harders Quick Cleanup who would like to seek a waste holler license for the Homestead County side of town.
Do they, do they plan to pursue the Giddy County side, you know?
I think they were going to see, but it's difficult for them because then they would have to haul to Red Wing, and they wouldn't be able to haul. So I think on the Homestead County side would fit in with their current schedule, so.
I noticed they did not fill out what day of the week they'll be servicing Pine Island.
Fridays.
I'm not sure on that.
Because we have trucks in town Tuesday and Friday, correct?
Correct.
Sorry, Bob. Oh.
That's something we can talk, talk to them about to ensure. That's something that I have worked on in the past diligently is getting our haulers on the same days, so.
And it'd be the third for the Homestead side?
Yep.
That'd be LRS Waste Management and then this one.
Correct.
Can we approve resolution twenty-three oh six with the condition that they service it either on Tuesday or Friday?
That's up to you.
In your opinion, from the staff side, would that help you get that job done so we try to consolidate the use of our roads?
I mean, we could, we could talk to them about it. We could let them know that, yeah, we would prefer them to go on Tuesdays or Fridays.
It's the same number of trucks over the roads, so. It's traffic in town on a different day, but I don't know. I mean, it's, it's the whole consideration of another set of trucks.
So would, would that, that was not a motion, correct, Jay?
I was asking questions, sorry. Todd, do you have any input, insight, thoughts, three companies versus two companies?
Yeah, yeah, just for traffic. Yeah.
That's the big idea.
Yeah, cans in the road. I get it.
I'll make a resolution to approve twenty-three zero six, and I would ask that staff coordinate with the, or to the best of the ability to consolidate days.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on twenty-three dash zero six. Any other discussion? As all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item D is a request to approve purchase agreement for PID ninety-eight point seven zero. Item D is a request to approve purchase agreement for PID ninety-eight point seven zero zero point zero zero seven zero and thirty-nine point zero two nine point zero five zero zero, feel like a computer. All right.
Uh, this is a purchase agreement for, and an opportunity for the city to purchase land, it would be on on the nor- northwest side of town, just north of um County Road eleven, um, so it is currently a land, um, so there's no development, and so there's no address, and we're going by PIDs. Um, the total amount is, there's twenty-two point zero three acres, and this, I'm recommending that the city uh enter to a purchase agreement um for the price of twenty thousand dollars per acre, which would equate to four hundred forty thousand six hundred dollars. Uh, I am asking council to enter into a contract for deed, and so municipalities can do contracts for deeds up to five years, and so this would be a five-year contract for deed, however, this does have a stipulation in it that we could pay it off early, um, if we were able to. This is a really big opportunity for the city to get acreage closer to downtown, as you know, we get a lot of questions about how we're going to expand um our commercial district, what we're going to do for businesses, this is an opportunity for the city to be able to own land and get shovel-ready lots available for highway commercial lots, it also opens up the city for, just to have land, um, as we grow, as we look at maybe having uh needing new city facilities down the road, uh, this would give us uh the ability to have land available if we needed to do that. Yeah, are there any other questions from? Council?
I'd piggyback off of what Ms. Howard was saying, that we're working with the EDA on this project, uh. When you look at the successes, some of our uh fellows cities throughout Southeastern Minnesota have had with shovel-ready land for commercial businesses looking to move into town, uh, we we would have that opportunity with this, uh, when they're looking for that uh access along the highway, uh, we saw successes with this down in St. Charles, Byron Casson, Chatfield, um, they all had that opportunity and and we've, we've been waiting for this opportunity for better part of twenty, twenty-five years, and uh it's come, it's come to a hard turn with that, so it's uh city staff have put a lot of uh work into getting this prepared and and doing their due diligence.
I'll move approval of the purchase agreement as presented.
Sorry, before it goes on, I do, there's one thing I want to add, so as the parcels are, it would not be the full parcel um of the southern parcel, so there, another buyer has entered into a purchase agreement with the Walters um for a small portion of that, so I just want to point out that there is a stipulation that the closing date would be sixty days after that parcel is planted, so that it would create the parcel that the city would essentially be buying. And that's shown in the agreement, um, in the exhibits.
So motion to approve the agreement?
Yes, yes, I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second, any other discussion, council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, city staff. All right, we are gonna move on to request to approve ordinance one-six-four, which is related to THC edibles.
I can give a little backstory on this, um, as you know, this was before council, in December, uh, for review, the plan was to review it in December and then have a um one-month open comment period for people to come into city hall and comment um on the ordinance, uh, we received zero comments at city hall regarding it, however, in the interim, then on the state legislature started talking about legalizing um marijuana, and we weren't really sure how that was going to continue, so at the January meeting, instead of voting to approve the ordinance, council actually decided to table the issue to see where the state went, since then, um, we, the city hasn't had any problems with THC, um, currently, I know Ted came up and spoke, and so we, um, Ted's a active member in the business community, and so the city didn't feel that there is a need to um regulate uh take the current legislation for the THC um prop edible products. However, since then, we've had multiple companies reach out to the city, wondering what our um regulations were, who do want to set up um new smoke shops up in town. That's when I brought it before council during a work session to see if we wanted to put this back on the table, just because there has been an increased um activity with people actually coming and getting tobacco licenses to apply for um a smoke shop, and since we have nothing on the books currently, they can sell um with no regulation, so when I brought it forth to council at the work session, um, there seemed to have some interest in somehow having an application process, so that we at least knew who was in town selling it, and where they would be selling it from.
So Elizabeth, just to, just to clarify, uh, you know, when we look at, when, when we look at the ordinance as it's written, um, I mean, the the ordinance itself, the way it's written, is very, very similar to what other communities have taken on for the interim while our state legislator is trying, trying to figure out what they're gonna do, and in speaking with other mayors and other city leaders that are having to look at this, um, I'm not seeing that our ordinance itself is uh any different, uh, because a lot of communities are faced with trying to figure out what direction the state's gonna take, and I guess I am not, when you look at some of the questions that Ted, Mr. Gladdy was raising with looking at trace amounts, what we would allow for sale, I mean, how how do you, how would a city go about trying to implement that, I mean, I I guess I'm not wanting to to try to nitpick by any means, but uh what are you, come, who are city leaders, or you know, city staff? You know, when you're looking at, looking at amounts, I.
I mean, the purpose of having some ordinance, right, is to have it as broad as it can be, but yet effective and serving the purpose.
Correct.
So.
I I mean, I don't think that council's gonna sit up here in any way trying to prohibit business, we welcome business, we we want business in our community, uh, I just, I'm gonna say what I said back in December, it's very unfair that our state leaders choose to push through legislation so quickly and then turn around and tell cities to figure out, you know, that's, that's not our job to do that if the state's gonna make a law, um, so I'm gonna put the blame on our state leaders for that, but we're stuck trying to protect our community, really, the the spirit of this ordinance is no different than alcohol or tobacco, where we want to make sure that, you know, product's not being sold, like we said, across the street from the school, which it's not, but neither do we want to open that door and allow somebody to come in and and do that, um, you know, so it's, that's where I, sometimes I feel like we're being put in a, in between a rock and a hard place, where we want to be fair and equitable to our businesses, but at the same time, we have a due diligence to protect the community as well.
I don't know the first thing about THC, unfortunately, uh, well, fortunately or unfortunately, I don't know which way to say that. Uh, and with the rate at which I get popped for random DOT drug screenings, I'll probably never get a chance to check it out, but um, you know, Mr. Gladdy is an asset to the community, he has multiple businesses, and I don't think Mr. Gladdy would be the problem here, the unknowns, uh, multiple people that have asked. Um, I see it as a way, honestly, that we can protect an asset that we already have in Mr. Gladdy's business by at least asking the questions of other people that come up and having this there, and I don't think it's going to be an absorption fee to have a license, I mean, our alcohol tobacco licenses is what, fifty, sixty bucks?
I was going to recommend sixty dollars, which is our current tobacco.
I mean.
It just covers staff time.
I hope that's, I mean, I don't, I would hope that's not a barrier to business for you, and I am, I am sincere with that, I don't want this to be a barrier for your business. Um, and while I trust that you are taking the right steps, and I appreciate the fact that you don't want people using it as a recreational drug, I can't say the next guy that comes into town is gonna have that mentality, so I appreciate you being forthright with that. Um, but I don't know how to, I don't know how to address your concerns on trace amounts, because I don't know the first thing about it. I don't know how we.
So Bob, can you hear us?
I can't.
Coming from your, you, I mean, you, you answered a little bit earlier, but just from a legal aspect of what we're looking at for our ordinance, are you seeing anything on there that that would be prohibitive compared to other communities that your firm has worked with, or are we, are we looking to be in line to what other communities are having to do for the interim?
Yeah. Yeah, unfortunately, mayor, uh, the, the, I I never get to say these words, but I'm gonna say them now, unfortunately, I agree with everything you said. I don't usually say unfortunately, I agree with everything the mayor says, but I unfortunately, I agree with everything you said. I think that you're right, um, the the legislature is currently on track to preempt, supersede, invalidate, whatever words you want to use, all local regulation of THC products that Ted has talked about, and then a broader group of products that are proposed to be made legal by the new legislation that's in the legislature, which is marijuana-based products, uh, that they're proposing to 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 sort of take cities, local governments, out of that equation altogether. And a lot of us, you know, the League of Minnesota Cities and a lot of city attorneys that work for cities don't think that's good policy. I I I'm not sure that taking cities out of that equation is the right way to do things, but that's currently what's proposed. And so should you pass what's in front of you tonight, it will be invalidated when this law passes, when this state law passes in the next couple of months. How we're gonna have to change what you pass, I don't know, because I don't know what's ultimately gonna pass in the state legislature, but what's proposed right now would take cities out of the regulatory role that you propose to play under this ordinance. You wouldn't license, you wouldn't zone uh these products. So, uh, you know, uh, it's hard for me to give you advice about what to do, I understand that Ted has a good business and he he's a good business owner, and and so I understand you want to accommodate him, but um, I don't know, I I, yeah, I don't know what the legislature's gonna do, so I can't tell you.
So we're talking about passing this tonight to protect ourselves tonight, tomorrow, right now, right, from somebody setting up shop. We're doing that knowing that whatever the legislature does, whenever they figure themselves out, it's gonna invalidate whatever we do tonight, that's what you're saying, Bob?
Yeah, that is correct.
Um, Ted, the, so I'm, I'm, it's starting to become a little more clear, so you, your concern is the wording more than trace amount, if you didn't apply, if we enact this ordinance and you didn't apply for a license, the more than trace amount would prohibit you from selling things like that drink, is that right?
Yeah, and then, I mean, the thing is, I'm, I'm, I'm not here to argue one-five-one point seven-two or what's gonna happen, when they hit, when they invented one-five-one point seven-two, it said we couldn't even sell a non-toxication stuff. Even though it helps me with life, even though a roll-on stick helps me with paint, I can't sell it on something. I'm not saying that, I, I'm, I'm, that's fine, but I'm just saying that if we enact this ordinance, and and I know twenty-six dollars, that's not, that's great, but I agree with that, but I'm here, and not, not that it, I'm upset about it, but for you to look in my, I spoke back and see where I'm, how I'm, I think that's a little bit of a difference.
What is that procedure, Elizabeth? I think.
Can we let Elizabeth answer, please?
Which question?
Um, I just asked the, the scope of financial discovery.
It's pretty standard, I mean, we require it for mobile food units, our mobile business units, um, we we do background checks, they sign a paper, we send it to the sheriff's department to do a background check, it's pretty standard for all licenses that we issue, including tobacco, alcohol.
So the financial background is basically making sure that they aren't?
I think we don't like run a credit check on them.
Okay.
It's part of the background check, what may surface through that.
Yeah.
Where, where is this financial wording, could you help?
So it's right, it's toward the, the bottom of the ordinance?
It is sub for um C, application for permit, it's under C. Does the city make conduct a background and financial check?
So again, in uh cases of other than Mr. Gladdy, this would reveal if somebody has a history of illegal sales or violations of ordinance.
Yeah, criminal background check, that's what we're trying to find.
Financial, essentially, it's gonna show up in the background check.
Correct.
It's not like we're asking to see his P and L, his statement of accounts, does that make you feel a little more comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move approval of ordinance one-six-four.
I'll second.
I have a motion and I have a second to uh approve the ordinance as it's written right now, with ordinance one-six-four. Um, any other discussion from council on this ordinance as it's written? Mr. Gladdy, I sincerely appreciate you coming to speak, um, yes, and very valid questions, uh, and I I appreciate that, and like I said before, this is, this is something that, in speaking with other mayors through the League of Minnesota Cities, that we're not the only town dealing with this right now either, so. Um, okay, council, um, no other discussion, all in favor?
Mayor, are you sorry, could you include a fee with it as well? Um, my recommendation would be sixty dollars, which is the same as that's our tobacco.
Can you want to amend your motion, Jason?
Yeah, I'll amend it to include the sixty-dollar fee.
We'll work with you, any ordinances that we have that impact current businesses.
We had amended motion a second on that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And move on to a request to approve on-call policy, city staff met with uh some of our city heads, department heads to review this.
I'll move approval of the on-call policy.
Motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Thank you, staff and department heads, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go into item.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I should have caught it before you voted, but um, I was going to ask council to retroact this back to January first.
Do you need to include that in language?
If we could pass another motion.
That is a definite conversation we've had.
Yeah, sorry, I'll, I'll make a second, can we just make a second motion? Or do you want the original motion, because we've already passed and voted on that one? I'll just make another motion that we retroactively pay our current employees to January first of twenty-twenty-three.
That works.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thanks, Bob. We're gonna move on to uh item G, which is request to approve ARPA funds for the website development invoice, which we had a conversation about the website, and it's getting.
Yeah, so all this is, is when we talked about doing the new website, um, I had we had conversations about using ARPA funds for that, however, when I was going through past minutes, I realized I neglected to ask what account. Um, when we approved uh the website vendor, I neglected to ask what account that would come out of, so this is just so we can pay the website vendor. Um, the website is pretty much complete, it is built, it is now riding on city staff shoulders to input information and pictures and things like that, um, unfortunately, just taking longer, because we're trying to do it as, as we find time, um, so now that the new year is up and running, we're hoping to dedicate more time whilst we can get the website up and running.
I'll move approval of the website development invoice to come from ARPA funds.
A second?
No motion, a second, and I I, I'm recollecting, we had, at one point, we had maybe talked about using ARPA funds for the website.
We had talked about it, we just had never officially made a motion.
Motion a second, any other discussion on the website bill? It's exciting to get that done and it's gonna be used, so I'm all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nothing for planning commission? Public Works and Engineering Resolution twenty-three dash. Public Works and Engineering Resolution twenty-three dash oh seven, approval plans inspection authorizing bids for the twenty twenty-three street improvement project F fund doc.
Yeah.
So Mr. Beatty, you plan on giving us the authorization to run this off? That the, uh, third of the three, the need to, uh, to be, uh, to be, uh, to be.
All right. New shit.
Sounds good. Yep, so this would um, set the bid letting date of March sixteenth. And at that point, we would tally up the bids, bring it back to you at the March council meeting for uh, for your consideration. So again, just the next step in the, in the um, construction project process.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-three zero seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
Second sign. Yes, no, no?
Good.
Passes. We have a request to purchase a lawnmower next.
I can do it. Uh, so this is included, this is all budgeted funds. We knew without, it was on our capital plan to replace a lawnmower this year. The city reached out and got several quotes. Those were in your packet and uh. So we included the price of a new mower, the price of what we would trade in our current mower at, um, for the final price. So those were uh, before you and your packet. Our council will make a decision on where you would like to purchase the new lawnmower from.
I'm gonna move. Approval of purchase of twenty twenty-three Bad Boy Rogue for a price of five thousand three hundred and fifty to boot.
We have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I had conversation with Wayne, he's comfortable with that mower. salesman's a good local kid that I trust. That was my, I've never heard of a bad boy.
Yeah, they've been, they've been a mower, so.
I like the method that's kind of.
Because it's the Ferris that they're trading in, and I mean, to go to stay in the Ferris line is gonna cost almost six thousand dollars extra. I mean, I can't justify that.
No, but Wayne originally recommended one with the Grizzly.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same, same sign? Passes. Okay, then we have a request to approve a quote for concrete work.
So this is similar, as you know, last year, we built a shed addition. The intention was to put concrete on the new addition as well as the shed that was already there. However, with construction prices going up as much as they were last year, we weren't able to complete the concrete work because the shed costs more than what we had budgeted for. And so we pushed the concrete work to this year. In your packet, there was six different companies that submitted quotes for the concrete work. This would be for the old portion and the new portion of the shed. We advertised for, to seek quotes both in the paper and online. And this is what the city received for the product. I will add that we did have an alternate concrete job on there, which was a slab outside the shed, but they came in over budget. We just wanted to see what that would be, so these prices do not include that. Uh, so we took up, so we did not include the alternate.
So no apron?
No. With, with that, again, if we need to do that next year, we can phase it just to better use the dollars.
And look, we have Bowers down there, next building, already in the, in the grabber.
Input on this at all time?
Uh, the two bottom companies, they're both good.
Yeah. Um, the two bottom, the two.
The two, sorry, the two lowest.
Two lowest, yeah, they're like bottom, holy crap, they're both big dogs.
Yeah, two lowest.
And I, I should add, so I, I had asked Wayne to type this up because I know, again, it's looking at the quotes, it's hard to compare. It looks like they're comparing apples to apples, apples to oranges, so I just had him verify that uh, everything was for the same job and that's why. They, each company had them differently and had them separated out, so that's why I had him get that end dollar about to put in his motor to council.
I'll move approval for the creative concrete.
We have a motion, we have a second? No second?
Again, I fall back on. I wanna do good things for good local people, but I struggle to justify to twenty. Sorry, thirty-eight hundred people that I'm gonna spend an extra three grand for a local guy. Unfortunately, that local guy has also been very vocal that we don't do enough to push business to business people in town, so. Mike, any thoughts?
Yeah, same. I'm trying to go with Tilford because he's local. Also having a hard time just buying the money, bro.
We have to be careful with stuff like that because then, you know, we could make that same argument with the mower that we just did by locally. And so is our policy gonna have to be that we just take the lowest bid no matter where they are? How would we be good shepherds of the money? How do we treat our city business as well?
There was considered, yeah. There were other considerations on the mower.
I did research um, of my own and having family and friends who work in the business, I asked around and um. I have the entire garden created, so.
Yeah, we've never, I mean, they've done a lot of workforce work.
So that's where.
Creative, creative, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no issue with creative.
No. No, I got no issue. And I've had Tilford personally do some of my stuff, so I got no issue with him either.
There's a chance that Tilford would match creative's price, whereas you just, it's my dollar.
And I can't, and we can't.
In the bid process, we can't do that.
That's true, we can't have mine. Sorry.
So we have a motion, no second? Any further discussion? Okay, motion.
I'll second the uh, I'll second the motion to use creative concrete for forty-four thousand dollars, seven, forty-four thousand seven hundred dollars.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Passes.
I don't.
Right now, we have a request to approve quotes for updates for water treatment facility. I think Todd, you're gonna take this?
Yeah, so at the plant, there we have primary clarifiers and all the chain drives and. We, I think we only have one working out of the four. Um, it's just, they just started falling apart. Um, so we got two quotes.
I can go over the quotes. I just want you to explain the waste water part. Um, so this is something we've actually been working on a really long time. It's been really difficult to get quotes, uh, just because our systems are so old and to find companies that would. Fabricate the part that we actually needed for the clarifiers. And so there's two handouts before you. There's one from New Fab Specialty Fabrications. They're out of Red Wing. Uh, their quote comes in at two hundred and six thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. And then uh, we have a second quote from PolyCam Solutions. Uh, there are two documents from them. One is the actual quote and then one is actually a synopsis of. What they found when they came to look at our facility. So their pricing is on page ten. And they separated it out into two, so the base price for just the fabrication of the uh. Part would be one hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars and then an additional one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for installation.
So they're a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars more than new fabrics like that.
Correct.
And we've had Larry from Woodset review these and he's comfortable with the.
Is this a not to exceed price or is this a, they get into it, oh crap, this is also bad, this needs to be fixed?
Yeah, I mean, that that's, you're gonna have that in any project, you're gonna also find out that, you know, and that's the way it is, but uh. That's, the two oh six is a pretty good price and they're a local.
It's a lot better than three seventy-five or the other cars, so. I'll move approval of the new file quotes, uh, in the amount of two oh six, three eighty-two, sixty-nine to update the water treatment facility.
So we have an approval on the second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Legal?
Yeah, I'm gonna hold back until we're in closed session, thanks.
Okay. Claims?
I'll move claims.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, claims passes. Monthly Department Reports Administrator, you got any of that?
No, it's mine.
Okay. Library, you're up.
I think everyone here has run into me before, but I'm Rachel. I'm the librarian here in town. We're really busy with One Town, One Title right now. We're reading the book, The Twenty-Ninth Day. That's by Alex Messenger. We gave away a hundred and sixty-nine, sixty-eight copies of that book so far. I think there's five left here at City Hall. So I'll be probably collecting those tomorrow and bringing them to the library just so that people who come into the library can grab those if they need. Um, we're looking forward to having Alex come and uh, give an author talk next week on Tuesday. That'll be at uh, the, in History Center, so we hope you can join us at seven o'clock. Otherwise, our geocaching program that was scheduled for Thursday this week got rescheduled for the ninth. Ms. Angie had a, an engagement come up. Uh, her daughter is in sectionals for basketball and didn't wanna miss that. And then, of course, the weather, it's like, yes. Go to your thing while we schedule, so that'll be at six thirty here on the ninth. Otherwise, we've got our full selection of kids programming going on. Wednesday is a storytime. Every other Friday has music and movement. We've got preschool playtime. We've got crafter, crafter school. Uh, which is a tenant-up program that Heidi just started. That was today. So lots of stuff happening. Just check out our website or Facebook.
Like go to H forty-nine, man?
Come on over after school, three fifteen, three fifteen to four fifteen, you can order your favorite snack and make a craft, so it's. I don't think she's limiting it up at the top, so I would love to see you there, Mike.
Has anybody checked any out broom ball equipment?
I haven't checked. I hope, because yes, we do have broom ball equipment available. That is at um, the grocery store right now, so feel free to check it out there. Yeah, I'm I'm gonna, I've got a, I've finally got my broom ball bag too, so that'll be going down there to actually house the stuff instead of the box. So everything is going well there, um, and we are starting to work on summer reading, so hopefully that'll be uh. Something to report in the next couple of months, so come on down to the library if you have more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
Public Works?
I apologize for being late.
E E D A, he's online?
I have nothing to add.
Nothing to add?
Okay.
Nothing to add?
Okay. Fire department's not here. Sheriff, Dan, you got anything at all? Nope? Okay. And uh, County Board? Here, the cemetery board not session. Think that'll be, uh. So pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section one three D point oh five subdivision three C three. The meeting will be closed to discuss offers or counteroffers for the purchase or sale of real property owned by the city. And comprised of approximately eighty acres adjoining our near-to-Highway fifty-two overpass. The land consists of access right-of-way obtained for the overpass project. A complete listing of the PIDs can be obtained. From the city upon request. So we're gonna go into.
Perfect.
Need a motion for that? I'll move that we uh, enter closed section pursuant to the stuff that Jason just read to discuss that item.
Second. Yep, take a vote.
Sorry, I was thinking about the whole process.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.